Welcome back. Our next item on the agenda is the adoption of the fiscal year 2016 town budget. I'm going to open up the chambers for a public hearing. All those in favor of adoption of the fiscal year 2016 town budget? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of? Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak against the town budget? Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak neither for nor against the 2016 town budget? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Is there any member of the council who wishes to speak about the town budget?
The only thing I'd like to comment on is to thank our town manager and staff for an incredible amount of work they've done, both in terms of keeping their eyes on priorities and cost containment as per communications with the school district, but just in terms of producing voluminous examples of evidence to defend general numbers and policies. And I think the whole town should know about their service to this community.
Thank you.
Well, just like a few other people up here on this council, I'm a newbie on the budget process. So, we've gotten to this point here and we haven't had a lot of discussions on taking things out of the budget or adding them in. For that, I'm a little bit disappointed because I don't like coming to the very last night and then have the whole thing to talk about. There were a couple of areas that I did have concerns about. We increased some areas like the Public Works Reserve by another $50,000 this year over last year's public, or the reserve account. And we set aside $40,000 in case they, in case we wanted to hire another person in planning and development, I believe, because we reduced their position. That's not going to show up as a tax increase or an increase on the budget this year because we saved a substantial amount of money by going out and looking for other alternatives for health care. And I do have to thank Sue for that one there. She took that ball and started running with it and she did find something that is saving the town quite a bit of money. The only concern I had was that's where our savings is, is the health. So, there are other areas of the budget that we should be looking at a little bit deeper and hopefully this coming year, we can look at that a little bit deeper, especially if the bus service gets finished and finalized so that we're not focused on that exclusively. The last thing that I would make a comment on, on this right here, is that our assessed value of the town is $599 million. The state has an assessed value of $608 million. And that's what we have to generate taxes for property owners here in Hamden. That puts us in, if not the 99 percentile, then it's 98.5 percent of assessed value. That's really, really high. So, I would say that with the budget not increasing this year and already being that high as assessed value, that the property owners of Hamden should probably not see a tax increase this year. That is our ultimate goal as a council and hopefully we've met that goal and hopefully the tax assessed value doesn't increase more. Thank you.
Great. I believe that $40,000 was set aside for a town planner if we wanted to hire one, not for a planning and development?
It's in a wage and salary reserve and the council could use that to do whatever you need to do with staffing once you have a new manager to determine where those needs are, if any. If there are not, it's in a reserve. It's not a requirement that you spend it.
And we're maintaining the mill rate at $17.50?
That is correct.
Okay. For the public? Any other? Yes?
I just want to say thanks to all the department heads, the town manager. We told them that we didn't want a rate increase this year. We wanted to come in and a, you know, flat line budget. We didn't have to cut. You know, they brought it in line. Negotiations went well with the union. You know, they knew what we were up against. They worked with us. Town manager worked on changing the health insurance. It wouldn't hurt the people of the town of Hamden, but it would help us save money. You know, and on the other hand, you know, I'm happy to see that maybe, you know, the school is looking over here and saying, okay, you know, maybe we can do a little something to help and, you know, they made it so we didn't have a huge rate increase this year, which makes a big difference for everybody in town. So, I would like to think positive that it was a good group effort, everybody working together to make this budget go through. I'm not going to sit here and take any of the credit for it because the department heads and the leaders have done an excellent job and I want to commend them for doing that and it just makes sitting here going over the budget a lot easier and I want to thank them for doing that.
Thank you, David. Yes, I too want to thank Sue for doing her due diligence and all the staff, all the department heads. And thankfully, the legislation, the state hasn't come through reducing our revenue sharing. So, for the next two years, I believe, Sue, you said?
Revenue sharing in both versions of the budget that's been proposed stays at the same amount that we receive now.
Yes, great. Go ahead.
I have no comment on the budget itself, but just to echo what the mayor has just stated, the, this process was very smooth. It went very, very well because of all the work that was done. And again, not by us giving them direction, micromanaging, but by letting them do their jobs. And for us to walk away with the budget that we do have with no increase is, speaks volumes, again, to their effort. And also to, I think, to the mayor's point about, it was nice to see the increase coming from the, from RSU 22 to be in line with what I think we expect rather than these extreme increases. And I will say, I think the education that we've, the time we've spent in the education, whether it's mailings or conversations that we've had, bringing to light some of the concerns, hopefully have helped to rein that in. So, hats off to Sue and her team and job well done.
Thank you. Anyone else? What's the pleasure of the council? May I have a motion?
Can I make a motion when we adopt the fiscal year 2016 town budget as is?
I second.
Any discussion? Terry?
Yeah, if I could make a friendly amendment, I'd like to remove the $40,000 from the wage and salary reserve. Do I need to make a motion for that or?
You make a motion to amend, which you just did.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll go ahead and second that.
All those in favor?
Of the amendment.
Of the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment? All those against? The amendment fails. Motion fails. Back to the regular motion to accept the 2016 budget as presented. All those in favor? Four for, all those against? Four to accept and two against accepting the budget. And just for notice, we are missing one member, Carol Dupree, this evening. Moving on. We have some more public hearings. Dean Bennett, would you come forth, please? I'll let Dean Bennett present the first one, which is zoning ordinance text amendment to Article 3.9, rural district frontage exception for cul-de-sacs lots.
Thanks, Bill. We've got five items here tonight. All of them are in common, that being leaving or giving more opportunity to Hamden citizens for development, infill development, reducing setbacks to make it a little more easier for people to build on, build buildings in various districts. It's, I think, view it as a very positive thing. The first one being the rural district frontage exception of cul-de-sacs, of course, came under the PND Committee to the Planning Board. Planning Board has approved and recommended back to the council with an ought to pass, ought to pass, O-U-G-H-D. In essence, what it does is it allows landowners that are in cul-de-sacs in the rural areas to reduce their frontage from 200 to 100 feet, providing they meet certain requirements. What it in essence does is allows further development of rural cul-de-sacs of those landowners that have a precarious lots, lot dimension, if you will. 200-foot frontage on a circle makes for lots that aren't high shaped, but close to it. So, you've got a lot of land area there coming off of 200-foot frontage. What this does is it allows those property owners to cut that in half and actually develop a lot with 100 foot of that frontage, providing that the building itself meets certain setbacks so that we don't have buildings close to each other and it maintains the rural character as a whole. Kind of a creative approach there again, giving more opportunity for development in those areas.
Thank you, Dean. I'm going to open up for a public hearing on that zoning text amendment. Any member of the public who wishes to speak in favor of the zoning text amendment 3.19? Any member who wishes to speak against? Any member of the public who wishes neither to speak for nor against? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. What's the desire of the council? Motion?
If I make a motion, we accept the zoning ordinance text amendment to Article 3.9 rural district frontage exceptions for cul-de-sac lots.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Item D, which is zoning ordinance text amendment to Article 3.2 industrial district building heights standard.
The second item, what is very common years ago is that towns, the fire departments in towns with ladder trucks and so forth weren't able to get up and provide fire protection of buildings over 35 feet. So, consequently, all across the state of Maine, you've got height limitations of 35 feet that have, that have lived within these ordinances. In a time where we have sprinkled properties, we have so far advanced over that, it, that's one aspect of this that warrants looking at. The other is, is our industrial districts in particular, given that there is no merit in terms of fire protection for limiting the size of a building, we in essence have put a ceiling on development to a great extent. The compromise being that came out of PND, went to the planning board and has come back with an ought to pass is basically to allow heights greater than 35 feet with an offset of an additional side yard setback. So, a, if there's a 30-foot setback, 35-foot setback for a 35-foot structure, then every foot, every foot above 35 feet, the setback will, will increase a proportionate one foot as well. That's it.
So, I'll open up the chambers to public hearing. All those in favor of zoning ordinance text amendment to Article 3.2 industrial district building height standards? Anyone wishes to speak? Anyone wishes to speak against? Anyone wishes to speak for or against? Neither for nor against? Thank you. Public hearing closed. What's the wishes of the council?
I'll move that we accept the zoning ordinance text amendment to Article 3.2 industrial district building height standards to allow exceptions to 35 feet.
I'll go ahead and second that amendment.
Any council discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. The next item is zoning ordinance text amendment to Article 4.3 conditional lot dimensions.
We have a, we have a provision in our zoning ordinance that allows for the creation of a lot of an odd configuration, giving certain obligations or requirements, if you will. There again, coming out of PND, going to the planning board, coming back with a recommendation of ought to pass with three, they term them as friendly amendments. What this in essence does is it allows the creation of a lot in the rural areas of 66 feet. So, if you, if you have an odd shaped property in the rural area with only 66 feet of frontage out on a main highway, this would give you an opportunity to actually create a lot from that 66-foot frontage. The requirement being that a buildable window of the normal 200-foot frontage has to be contained within that lot. So, you can't have a spaghetti lot, if you will. They call spaghetti, you know, a five-to-one ratio of frontage versus depth. You're still going to come off with a small at 66, but it's got to open up enough so that you can meet the actual lot size and frontage requirement square within there, thereby spreading out the houses appropriately for the landscape of the rural area. The original recommendation from PND was to incorporate residential A, residential B districts as well into this formula in addition to the rural district. Going to the planning board, the planning board has, the ordinance committee, the planning board recommended to the planning board, which came back to the council, that their recommendation was to remove residential A and B at this point in time. The concern the planning board expressed was, is that we have not evaluated the impact of this criteria being applied to those subdivisions and much more higher density residential developments. They weren't necessarily against it, but before recommending it and actually to incorporate those two residential areas into this provision, they would like to see additional information generated on that. But they were certainly in favor of the applying to the rural district. They've also suggested a sentence clarifying that this permit for a conditional lot is outside the context of a subdivision. This isn't a way to circumvent a subdivision. And then the last one being the renumbering of the texts, which is a minor housekeeping thing. The recommendation, as I described, came back as an ought to pass to the planning board with the unanimous approval and recommendation from the planning board by dropping residential A and B out of the original proposal.
I'll open up the chambers to public hearing. All those, anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this text amendment? Anyone who wishes to speak against this text amendment? Anyone who wishes to speak neither for nor against this text amendment? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Do I have a motion for the council?
I'll make a motion that we accept the zoning ordinance text amendment to Article 4.3 conditional lot dimensions as per the report back from the ordinance committee and the planning board.
Second. Any council discussion? Terry?
Just a question to Dean. Is, is the 66 feet the right of way? I, I thought it was 60 feet.
66, it's, hold on, Terry. 66 feet frontage would be a lot.
Does that hold?
The 60 feet, you might be getting confused.
I am.
Yeah. The 60 feet is back on the original amendment we talked about, the rural district frontage exception for cul-de-sacs. That requires a setback of the house, an additional 60 feet so that you don't, so that you spread the houses out around the rural cul-de-sac. Typically, I guess 30-foot setback from the, from the cul-de-sac right now. If you're going to utilize this provision and create the 100 foot out of the 200 foot, then that house is required to sit by the minimum of 60 feet so that it separates from the front house on either side. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, okay. So, I, so I'm just confusing that with the?
The 66 feet.
Okay.
Right. Which is the allowed frontage under the conditional lot.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Unanimous? Thank you. Next item, zoning ordinance text amendment to Article 4.15 water recreation and Article 7.2 definitions. Dean?
This came as a request from the code office. Our current requirement, statute, I guess, the statute of the state of Maine requires a fence around pools, hot tubs, those types of things that are an attraction, nuisance attraction in communities. The code officer felt that the statutory language fell far short in its descriptive because actually the way of you, if you'd apply the strict interpretation of the statutory language, you could put a, and I'll be facetious to the extent, but it's, you know, a plastic little league fence. You know, it's not specific. What the MUBEC, our building code, requires that if you're going to adopt more specific fencing requirements around swimming pools and those types of things, it's got to be consistent with what the MUBEC code has laid out. And so, Miles Block, our CEO, has prepared this, really, it's a, what you have in front of you is a cut and paste out of the MUBEC code as required to do that, to provide another layer of safety around these so that we're not dealing with a vague, in his opinion, language in the statute.
Thank you, Dean. Open up this to public hearing. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak for this text amendment? Anyone who wishes to speak against this text amendment? Anyone who wishes to speak neither for nor against? Thank you. Seeing none, public hearing closed. Motion from the council?
I make a move that we, zoning ordinance amendment, text amendment to Article 4.15 water recreation and Article 7.2, 7.2 definition be accepted by the council.
Second. Any discussion?
I just want to make one point there, that these changes that we made are really conforming to what we need to do, also from the insurance point of view. If you didn't have this, then you would be going into some trouble down the road if you were refinancing or having your house inspected. So, this is actually a very good thing.
Thank you, Steve. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Unanimous? Thank you. Next item is zoning ordinance text amendment to Article 3.13 business B district. Dean?
Lastly, we recently, you folks, actually, through PND, through you folks, we created some additional business B district zoning down here in Western Avenue. When we did that, we in essence transferred one district to the next and when you do that, so comes the setback requirements of that same district. And what, what Miles, again, has found, that the district requirements setbacks posed problems on those properties when we did that. So, what this is, is this is a, this is a way by which to require a 30-foot setback along lot lines that about the residential zones, but reduce those setbacks so that allow for the construction of sheds, garages, those types of things on these properties, but yet still protect a commercial versus a budding residential property.
Now, open up the chambers to public hearing. Is there anyone who in the public who wishes to speak for this text amendment? Anyone who wishes to speak against this text amendment? Anyone who wishes to speak neither for nor against? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion for the council?
Make a motion that we accept zoning ordinance text amendment, Article 3.13 business B district.
Council discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the text amendment, of the motion? Unanimous? Thank you. Thank you, Dean.
Thank you.
Very good, good job. Moving on. Nominations, appointments, elections. I believe we have none. Unfinished business. Item A, which is property and casualty insurance bid results. It was supposed to be at the finance committee, but I believe we're going to discuss it this evening.
Yes, this was also discussed at the services committee meeting when we looked at the initial results of the bid and the additional information that we were waiting for was the cost of providing five bonds, bonding capability to $500,000 for the six people on staff that are covered by bonds. The Maine Municipal Association quote included that number and the Kaiser Insurance quote included only bonding for $100,000 for one individual. And so, the amount that they provided me as a, as a quote would be $1,750 per individual for the $500,000 coverage, which adds $10,500 to their quote in addition to the additional general liability and flood and earthquake coverage in order to bring it to parity, bringing the Kaiser bid to $58,297 and the Maine Municipal bid to $47,413. And my recommendation is to continue with Maine Municipal based on that cost analysis.
Thank you, Sue. Do we have a motion from the council?
I'll make the motion that we accept the MMA bid for the municipal insurance policy for this coming year.
Second.
Do we have council discussion?
Quickly, I did look that over. Most folks know that I am an insurance professional by trade. The MMA proposal did make sense in this case. If we were a smaller town that only had one or two people that needed to be bonded, it would definitely make sense to go the other route. But with the amount of people that need bonded insurance with this community and the liability that we would have exposed the town to if we went with the other company would have been substantial. So, MMA was, was also my, my recommendation.
Thank you, Steve. Any other discussion? All those in favor of accepting MMAs? Unanimous? Thank you. Next item is police department contract. I believe we're going to postpone that.
I would ask that we postpone that. You'd postpone that until your next meeting. Finance does need to discuss that in an executive session prior to it coming to the council.
And they have no, you said they have no problem?
I spoke with the union representatives today and they were fine with this.
Thank you. Next item is the interim town manager. Sue, you wish to?
At the last meeting, you had talked about whether, what your options were and whether you were going to engage the services of myself or someone to act as an interim manager until your new person came on board or got through the projects for this summer. And you had a meeting scheduled with your consultants in regard to setting up interviews and those kind of things. And it was my understanding you would have had a better idea after that as to what your needs were and whether or not you wished to do that.
Sue says she will continue through, on a part-time basis, which is two days a week with no benefits through the end of August. Do we have any council discussion? Go ahead.
So, if, if Sue was here for two days out of the week, who was here for the other two? Or do we just not have a town manager for those two days?
I believe Joe Rogers will be covering. Am I right?
I talked to Joe about this and Joe's willing to cover if somebody's not in the building. The, the primary, if this was November or December and you weren't at year end, there would be less of a need for someone to do the end of year stuff related to the audit, the stuff related to the stormwater audit that's next month, changing your health insurance, which is a process that is supposed to take effect the first of August, or to get the tax commitment done, which is the middle of August. The part-time nature of what I would be doing is getting all of those things done so that your new manager who comes on board has those things completed on an operational basis, the day-to-day stuff. This place won't, isn't going This place won't, isn't going to disintegrate. And what the point of this is, is to make this a transition and not a cliff. So whoever comes next inherits something where all those things are completed and the things move forward, and staff have someone who is knowledgeable about all of those projects on hand to get them through that. But that is the only, as I said, we're at another time of the year, and the, all these things weren't hanging over July and August. Joe could certainly do this all the time and not have a necessity for anybody else. The nature of time of year and when it's doing is the only thing that makes it important. And it makes it important only in terms of what you want the next manager to have ready for them to just move forward with when they come on in late August or early September, whenever your thing is.
So if the, so the transition should have started, what, six weeks ago? Two months ago? Something like that? Whenever you first, you know, I guess I'm just baffled why, when your end date is June 30th, why it's not ending on June 30th? And Joe was the interim town manager when you got here, and he can certainly do it when you leave. I'm guessing Denise and anybody else that's, you know, that's been under your guidance for the last 14 years should be able to do this or should be able to manage most of it. Do we, you know, your authority, as far as I'm concerned, ends on June 30th. Do we reinstate or give you some sort of interim authority? And what authority is that? I mean, I guess I'm just, I don't understand how this would work with two active acting town managers. Joe Rogers.
Don't put him in as an acting town manager, yes.
Okay, so we have to actually put somebody in as an acting town manager, right?
Well, you said before you wanted to hire an interim.
Yes.
So it's often that would be an interim.
Okay. Bring someone here to manage a town that doesn't know anything about the town, rather than having someone out of her good graces, willing to spend two days a week to make sure we're maintaining this town government.
With no benefits.
With no benefits.
Will we be saying the same thing on September 1st? Because, you know, this person is going to be brand-new on September 1st also, so...
My hope over the next two and a half months, when she'll be available, is that I can talk her into staying.
Talk her into staying where?
Staying here.
Permanently?
Absolutely.
Are you out of your mind?
Terry, please.
Terry, watch yourself.
No arguments, Terry, please.
I take that back.
Thank you. David?
My only issue is with the August deadline, because when we talked to Eaton and Peabody, and we all sat there and discussed this, the earliest we figured, or most rational, if any of these candidates that we interview we want, we'll be looking at the first, what, September or October? Was it, was it October 1st or September 1st?
Early September would have been the first.
So instead of going back down this road again, I would rather say, okay, then we'll agree to October 1st. If we have somebody on board, if she needs to get done before then, then that's fine. But we can have somebody on place. We'll have a smooth transition from them. It would be no different than the new public works director coming on board, and there's nobody to show him what to do. I'd like to have at least somebody here to show him how things, where it is, what it is, who's who and what, so we keep the smooth transition going. The August deadline, I would rather move up so we keep the common flow going. And, you know, and Joe, I've got nothing against Joe, but Joe doesn't know anything about stormwater, and I'm sure he doesn't know a whole lot about the health insurance stuff that she's been working on for months. And, you know, and if you get whoever that you hire on a part-time basis, they don't know anything that's going on in this town.
And Joe has a lot on his plate as it is, but as Sue told me, there is a lot to do between now and when a new town manager comes on board. And even when one does, they aren't going to be able to come in here and just take over it just like that, so, you know.
I agree with, I agree with the mayor, that we should, as long as Sue's in agreement to keep her as long as it takes to make sure there is a smooth transition between her and the new town manager.
She says through the end of August. She's willing to do it, and if, we could always talk to her if we had to have her part-time after that, but she, she has personal things to take care of, as I understand, so... Sue, you want, you wish to? All the things that you, we discussed this morning that have to be done between now and when we get a new town manager?
My major concerns are related to things that are occurring in July and August that, Council McAvoy, I couldn't have done before the time passes to get them here. The year ends fiscally June 30th, but there's no magic button that gets pushed that makes everything, the financial statements and all of that completed, that the auditors have to have to do their jobs when they are scheduled to come in, the last day of July and the first week in August, which is the earliest they can come in and have everything ready for them to be done. Stormwater is happening in July. It isn't, I didn't schedule it for them. That's when that is occurring. The council just got to the point where they heard the medical presentation that we're transitioning for, but that includes a lot of meetings with the employees so that they can understand what those changes are. That it, I am not trying to stay to make your life miserable, and I didn't offer initially, I was asked if I would help through this transition. And I said that I would if the council wished me to. If the majority of the council doesn't wish me to, then I won't. That, it, these are the things that need, somebody's going to do them, or somebody's not going to do them, and when you get a new manager, they'll deal with it. Those are your options.
Thank you, Sue. Okay. Is there any member of the public who wishes to make a comment before we make a motion?
I would like to just make a comment that, oh, sorry.
Lisa, name an address, please.
Lisa, thank you for introducing me, Bill.
Thank you.
Lisa Carter, Western Avenue, Hampden.
Thank you.
I would like you to know that as we're sitting in the audience, the profanity just went out over the air from a counselor. And it was graphic profanity. And I think that's a real black eye on this town council and this town. So I think you better watch this, and I would ask for a reprimand of who did it.
Any other public comments? Thank you. Do I have a motion from the council?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept Sue Lassard's gracious offer for her to maintain her position at part-time basis through the end of August.
Second. Any council discussion on that motion?
Well, I'll back to my statement I made earlier. While we talk to Eaton and Peabody, we probably won't have anybody in place by then. So I would rather if she was available, we could keep it until we have a new manager on, if she's willing to talk.
You may, she, you may sue. Of course.
That's my only suggestion.
Well, can I amend my original?
Well, I think it's going to depend on Sue. I don't know what her commitments are in August, and maybe it's a week or so. And if she wanted to come back the following week and get us through September or whatever till the new person's on board, I don't know.
You can make an amendment motion if you wish, of course.
I'd rather hear from her.
Yeah, okay.
Her viewpoint. So we don't have to do this again in two months.
I said August because that's when I thought that the thing was, but it, my, my God. My, well, no, I just am, this is, this is not the story that never ends. This is, I am sure that you will have someone who comes on board. If I am not available the first week or so of September and you needed something later in the month, I would certainly help you. But the greater part of this commitment is from now through the end of August. You know, I, I'm going to have a phone. If any of my questions after that, I will certainly answer them. But, you know, that, my hope is that much of what needs to be accomplished will be done by the end of August, and that anything after that is limited in nature. That would be my...
Stand with the original motion.
Dennis?
Yeah, I just, from observing both the council and the performance of the town manager casually over the last few years and a lot more in the last six months, it's clear to me that Sue Lassard has the best interests of this town in front of her. I think we're likely to have this offer, and I'm pretty sure that should a new town manager start mid-September and need a couple of days one-on-one to get the hang of what's going on, that Sue would do whatever she can do to make that happen. And I think we're fortunate to have this offer.
I concur with that. We're very fortunate for Sue to be willing to stay on on a part-time basis, two days a week with no benefits. I don't think we can ask for anything more than that. And when the time comes, if we haven't settled on a new town manager at that time, then we'll address it at that time, so...
Thank you. All those in favor of that motion? Five for, all those against, and one against. Thank you. Moving on. There is no new business. Committee reports. Terry?
In the services committee that we had, I don't remember what the date was, last week, there was actually nothing of any significance that was discussed, so I have no report. Thank you.
Dennis?
There has not been an infrastructure meeting since the last town council meeting. There will be one, trying to calculate in my head, coming up next week.
Monday.
Thank you.
Monday evening, yeah. And I am head of planning and development. We had a meeting on June 3rd, and we tried to get into the subdivision ordinance reveal, and there were some questions with our economic development director, who is also acting as the planner at the moment. And he has to do some more review of that ordinance, and he's going to get back to us at the next meeting. And that's all we discussed on that. And as deputy mayor this evening, we did not have a finance meeting because we did not have a quorum, so there's nothing to report on that. Managers report.
I'm pleased to report that we've locked in a propane price of $1,159 for the 2015-16 year. I had thought it was going to be $125, and we're almost a full 10 cents lower than that, which is 86 cents lower than this year. Our diesel fuel price is locked at $2.189, and our heating fuel is locked at $2.189 as well. I'll be scheduling meetings within the next two weeks for employees to hear about the changes in healthcare coverage and how the new plan will work. And the start date for this would be August 1st, if the paperwork can all get done in an expeditious fashion. I've scheduled the 2014-15 audit for July 30th and the first week in August. This will allow the final warrants for 2014-15 to be done after the bills arrive in July. Year-end reconciliations to be done, and all of the year-end statements to be prepared for the auditors prior to their arrival. At the present time, I am estimating that the tax commitment will be ready for the council by August 17th, so that bills can be created and go out by the week of August 24th. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Greg Nash, who acted as the interim public works director from the time the former director resigned in December of 2014 until June 8th. His assistance was invaluable and not only helped us get through a very difficult winter season, but also in getting geared up for the spring/summer season of cemeteries, parks, mowing, and roadwork. Our new public works director, Sean Courier, has now been with us for one week, and Greg has been able to, available to help in that transition as well, which is going well.
He decided to stay?
Yeah, he's still here, yes. The Water District project on the lower section of Coldbrook Road started today. The estimate on that section was seven to 10 days. It had originally been presented to the town as starting on June 8th, but it started a week later. And as far as the cable consortium, I have another meeting with representatives from Time Warner Cable on June 24th. The most recent meeting on June 10th was not productive since the person that was sent to the meeting from Time Warner had no authority to negotiate in regard to the contracts, which was a bit frustrating on everyone's part. And finally, one thing that's not in the report is that I received a memo today from the BAC system that there is a proposal to fund the entire remaining 1.73 miles of the Route 1A project as one project with bids to go out in 2019, which sounds like a far away. But what that would allow is that entire remainder of the Route 1A project to be done in one contract rather than in the three little ones that they had talked about doing between time. And the estimated town share of that 10% is $465,000. What that also allows you time to do, should you choose to, is to go through the ordinance and bond development so that in November of 2016, you could have a bond on a referendum ballot for that project. And that $465,000 would coincide with the end of two other debt service obligations you have. One for the pave, the dirt road paving that we did, where you borrowed $750,000. And then the most recent end of the LL Bean parcel, which was $360,000. So a bond for $465 to complete, plead the Route 1A project would be a smaller bond payment, allow that to happen, and allow you to do it before you would have to have the money available in 2019. So that would be a really good option for the town, rather than these little tiny, the gear-up mobilization costs for these very small projects and the craziness they create by tearing up Route 1A. This proposal, should it go through, would be much better for the town. It's a couple of years out, but it finishes it, which is something that's been a promise since, before I came here 15 years ago, so...
Sue, could you explain to the public what the acronym BAC stands for, who they are, and who they represent, please?
Bangor Area Comprehensive Transportation System. And Hampden is a member due to the nature of the population density that we have on the Route 1A corridor that comes down, which means that funding from MDOT for roadwork in Hampden is part of this Bangor regional comprehensive transportation system, and as these projects are decided on by a board that's combined or comprised of representatives from within that system.
Thank you. Any questions for the town manager? Thank you. Moving on. Counselor comments. David? Terry?
None, other than remember to shop local and buy American.
Dennis?
None, thank you.
Steve?
Mark it on your calendar, no comment.
Greg?
No comment.
My comment is, as deputy mayor this evening, I want to thank the mayor for allowing me to take over the council meeting. And I want to thank him for being here this evening, being in probably the pain he's in. I can't believe he attended the meeting, because most individuals, after having a major hip operation, would be hippity-hoppity in bed. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Counsel adjourned. Thank you.